We're gonna start with the Seminole Airport Authority. Do you have a roll call, please? Larry Church.
Present.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Chris Anson. Scott Rossman.
Here.
John Kramer. Jolene Desette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Second. Roll call, please. Larry Church.
I'm sorry.
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
The move.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to the Seminole Gas Authority. Can we have a roll call for this one, please, Jay?
John Kramer. Chris Anson. Jolene Desette.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to Seminole Utilities Authority. Can we have a roll call for this one, please, Jay?
Chris Anson. Trace Connor.
Here.
John Kramer. Jolene Desette.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from this consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to the Seminole Municipal Authority. Can we have a roll call for this one, please, Jay?
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Chris Anson. John Kramer. Jolene Desette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson. Jolene Desette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item two, consideration and possible action to approve wall engineering invoice number 23 and draw funds in the amount of $388,667.99 for work completed at the Seminole wastewater treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item two, consideration and possible action to approve wall engineering invoice number 23 and draw funds in the amount of $22,083.55 for work completed at the Seminole wastewater treatment plant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item three, consideration and possible action to approve acceptance of grant number ARP-23-0298-G from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the amount of $650,264.59 contingent upon the Seminole Municipal Authority's match amount of $667,316.39.
So we have the money to match?
Yes, sir. In fact, another fantastic job by our grant staff in finding the money. The folks that distribute the ARPA apparently had money come back to them and asked us if we had any projects that had recently been completed. So our match money, frankly, is already in the ground. So it's money that we've, for the most part, that we've already spent and will eventually be refunded to us and you guys will be re-appropriating in some other manner.
Well, your staff never cease to amaze me.
Man, I'm telling you, they're fantastic.
Can't go wrong with that.
No, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and I'm gonna go ahead and recess this meeting, if we will, so that way we can do the two executive sessions together. So I just need a motion for recess.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Seminole City Council meeting. Can we have a roll call for this one, please, Jay?
Trace Connor.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Present.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Chris Anson. Jolene Desette.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
John Kramer. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, so we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this town to be together as a community. I ask you to give us wisdom, Father, in wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of how to do and what to do for our city. We thank you for a wonderful place to live. Thank you for all the blessings that you've provided for us. And, Father, we ask you, with your mercy and your grace and your wisdom, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and with no items removed from the consent agenda and we have no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll move on to presentations and proclamations. And this month is Native American Heritage Month, and seeing as how our Vice Mayor is here and can read that for us, I think it's honorable to you and your tribe that you get to do that. So I sent that to you. Do you have it?
I have it.
Okay. People, go ahead and read that.
Right on. Midow for the opportunity and for the proclamation. Celebrating Native American Heritage Month, whereas the cultures, traditions, and histories of Native American communities have significantly contributed to the rich tapestry of our nation's heritage, and their achievements continue to shape and enhance every aspect of our society. And whereas it is fitting to honor the profound impact of Native Americans on our nation's history, recognizing their enduring contributions to our cultural, educational, political, and scientific landscapes. And whereas Native American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the critical importance of preserving and maintaining Native cultures, languages, and spiritual practices, which are vital to the identity and continuity of indigenous peoples. And whereas this month serves as an opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the history and legacy of Native American nations and to educate ourselves and others about the contributions and sacrifices made by Native peoples in the face of adversity. And whereas through education, cultural exchange, and community engagement, we can foster greater understanding and respect for the unique heritage of Native Americans, ensuring that their voices and stories are heard and respected. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Seminole do hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month in Seminole, Oklahoma.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to board appointments.
Consideration of approvals of new Seminole Housing Authority board members. Now, these are members that were given to me as opportu-- or those who could serve on that board, so they're not my individual appointments, but they are members that were given to us. So what we'll need to do is, we'll need to vote on each one of these individually. And so before we start that, do you guys have any questions?
I don't answer anything. I have a couple of questions. Number one, in the housing authority, what is that, what do you do on that board? What does that consist of?
Steve, you could probably better answer that one.
Yeah. The housing authority for the city of Seminole is actually funded through the HUD, Housing Urban Development. And they get their money direct from HUD. And we, the city council, actually has governance over them, but all their rules, their manuals that they follow are all issued through HUD. So we have very little interaction, but we do have to acknowledge that they are their board and we appoint to their board, et cetera, so.
These two, these two folks, they know something about that, or are they just names? I know Stephanie and also I know Chris. I guess it's our Chris. Did we graduate him? Is that who it is?
I assume it is.
I just wanna know kinda what, do they know what, do you do through this thing, or are they just names that we have?
So they, they are required by federal law to have some resident representation. So that would be Stephanie's role is to represent the residents that are there.
Okay.
Okay? And then, as far as Chris is concerned, it's my understanding that he is or has been a property owner that rented through Section 8, the vouchers, et cetera. So I think he has had or will have some involvement with how the program works.
Are we talking mainly Randolph Drive area? Is that where most of that is?
Section 8 as well.
Section 8 vouchers as well.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Are we just talking about Randolph Drive or pick this for?
No.
The citywide Section 8 stuff?
Yes, sir. It is citywide. The vouchers can be used anywhere in a rental capacity. So there are many, many units outside of Randolph Drive. In fact, I think, I think they've, man, I'm gonna get this wrong, but my understanding is that HUD has given them 118 vouchers for families that don't have anywhere to live. Currently, we're that many units short of Section 8 ability, so.
I thought their office is down in Randolph. That's why I had it.
It is.
That's what I had in my head.
That's where they are. Yes, sir.
So.
Do those include ours?
Craig Day and the Craig.
The ones that are over here, are those?
Yes.
One days, whatever.
Okay.
Your guys are confident they know what's going on with Section 8?
Back to Corey's comment, we have not vetted them at the city level. This came from the rest of the board members that said, hey, these people would be really ready to serve. My understanding from Adam Baker is that sometimes they have a real problem getting a quorum, so they're trying to get additional members added.
I don't know that we would know exactly what they need in those people.
That's why I was trying to ask, because I don't think we'll send it either.
Why you kinda gotta put them?
If you prefer, you can wait and I'll have someone from the housing authority make the presentation.
How many members are on the board? Or just send in all kinds?
We're just building a spot. Seven. It must be seven. If it's not, it will be by Wednesday.
You've exhausted my expertise on the housing authority.
I actually tried looking this up and I couldn't find any information on it, so I'm glad Jeff said something.
It's good to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one, Stephanie Johnson. We need a roll call on this, right?
Can I ask one question? Is that Stephanie Johnson, this, this like?
Stephanie Johnson Hassel?
Yes.
I asked the same question. I don't know that. Do you know that, Steve?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know who I'm voting on here.
I'm with him on it. I don't know who. Is Chris Carroll the one that used to have the car lot, or?
Let's table and I'll have them come back in December and we'll have it much more prepared.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, no problem. Okay, so we need to vote on table on this, or can we just, okay? Just all in favor?
You can, you can do either one. I would feel better if you just voted to table it.
Okay.
We table this till December's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, like sign. Okay, moving on. We'll get some more clarity on that one. For sure. Thank you. All right, approvals and acceptances under bid to surplus, item one. Consideration and possible action to surplus the following inoperable vehicles in the public works department. The 2008 Ford F-250, VIN ending in number 1887, with 165,000 miles. The 1991 Ford F-600, VIN ending in 7337, with 220,000 miles. And the 1994 International 4900, VIN ending in 0236, I'm sorry, with 320,000 miles. Question?
What happens after they surplus? Is it auctioned, or they just get rid of it? What happens?
Yes. Typically, we'll either have a live auction, or most commonly, we'll entertain sealed bids.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes, sir.
Motion passes.
All right, under current business, item two, consideration and possible action to purchase a used 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe with 31,765 miles for the police department from Seminole County Sheriff's Office, a non-budgeted capital item.
How did we come to desire this vehicle?
That's a great question. Typically, I don't surprise you guys with things, but once in a while, we get a screaming deal, and I'd like to invite our police chief up to kinda brief you a little bit, make the same pitch that he did in my office. Pretty convincing, actually.
Well, it all started with our current K-9 unit, the 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe. We thought it was gonna need a new motor. And the prices of the motors are sky high, $10,000 to $10,000 now. And the vehicle just wasn't worth it, so we replaced it. And just luckily, in the sheriff's office, there's a, this particular Tahoe that's already upgraded for a K-9 unit, with the cage and all that stuff that's already in it, would possibly get a surplus. I called the sheriff to ask for it, but we don't know. So we'll do some checking. I've done some checking with two separate fleet dealers with the fleet's package vehicles, and they estimated the value for this vehicle to be somewhere in 31,000 to 42,000. This current vehicle already has roughly $17,000, $20,000 worth of lights and equipment in it. One thing that we'll have to do is put a radio in it and put our details aside. And try to get it.
And the amount?
I'm sorry.
The, the cost of the vehicle, I know it's in their packet, but for the public.
About 35,000, what the sheriff and I, taking it from where you did.
Is that just something that they no longer have a K-9 unit, or?
No, they do not.
They don't? That's the reason they're, it's surplus.
His words, his setting up parking lot, his case on my units go down, last reported, we'll get them.
Their last K-9, just passed away. Yeah, cancer.
How much did you say the fleet guys estimated value?
31,000 to 42,000. 31,000 to 42,000. And last Friday, I seen another advertisement on Facebook, I looked into it, called the issue pursuits. They had a 2023 Chevy Tahoe with 24,000 miles. They were asking for 42,000. So that's the right amount of dollars.
Where does that money come from, Chris?
Yeah, as it says on your agenda, it is unbudgeted, so we're gonna, we're gonna tap a little bit of the reserve.
Okay.
Do those, do they come with a warranty at all? Anything left on the warranty? I guess probably 100,000 miles, I guess.
The Chevrolet Tahoe, or 100,000 miles. Our trade is 60,000 for them. I want pretty good with me.
It's already, if I, is it the white one?
Yes.
Okay. And it's already equipped too, like in the back with everything, like pull-out trays? Or I don't remember, I don't remember the inside too much, but?
No, it doesn't have a pull-out trays.
Okay. But everything else is good, like it was all set together, right? In the air and all that?
Yes.
Did it have a monitoring system?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. I'd like to see us also try to get that monitoring system, like the air, for sure.
Yeah, we don't even know what that means.
So the monitoring, or gee, I mean, it's, it's. It's turned. So the monitoring system is, it alerts, so when the unit reaches a certain temperature or a certain degree inside, that unit will lose its mind, and therefore that alerts you that the dog is in conditions, or canine, not that dog.
I got you.
Uh, canine is in conditions that needs to be attended to.
Got you.
There's been many, many, many deaths of animals, not because they have horrible handlers, but because situations like that where it just, you either end up on a call, or you end up to the side and don't take long for it to just go wrong, so.
Got you. No worries.
Looks a lot cheaper than buying something, you know, already, so.
You want to make that motion, make that change?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with addition to cost of the monitor system. And I don't know if that's a system that can be traded from the old unit.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Because you can't do that.
You can't do that.
We're gonna purchase the vehicle.
Purchase the vehicle, then we'll throw in the monitoring system at a later date.
Okay. All right. Can we keep our motion just without that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jolene Desette.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes, sir.
Motion passes.
All right, under current business, item two, consideration and possible action to purchase a used 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe with 31,765 miles for the police department from Seminole County Sheriff's Office, a non-budgeted capital item.
How did we come to desire this vehicle?
Got you, got you.
Looks a lot cheaper than buying something, yeah, already, so.
You want to make that motion, make that change?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, with addition to costs of, um, the monitor systems. And I don't know if that's a system that can be traded from the old unit.
Oh, sure, it can.
Okay.
Oh, because you can't do that.
You can't do that.
We're gonna purchase the vehicle.
Purchase the vehicle, then we'll throw in the monitoring system at a later date.
Okay, alright. Can we keep our motion just without that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Scott Rossman?
Yes.
Jolene DeSet?
Yes.
Jeff Nance?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item three, consideration and possible action to approve payment of Silver Star Construction Company Incorporated, invoice number three-five-seven-nine-two, in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and eighty, twenty-six thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and invoice number three-five-seven-nine-three-R, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents, for CDBG dash CI dash zero-zero-zero-two-two, Latham Pools Parking Lot and Truck Access Project.
So I hate to ask this question here, and I, and I forget every time I go up to the city, but can somebody short story what our interest is with Latham Pools and why the city council is approving?
You bet.
Money for a parking lot?
I'm glad you asked. So, uh, HUD also offers a, a block grant to Oklahoma, and it's called a community development block grant. CDBG for short, and that, you see that in the, in the number there. Uh, CDBG has a few set-asides. Uh, we tap the streets and the water is one pot of money. They also have an economic development part of money that's under the CDBG grant. And we also go for the CDBG EDIF, or Economic Development Finance. Again, our grant staff is wonderful, and we wrote a grant and received part of that pot of money to create jobs in Seminole. And that's the whole intent of that grant, is to create jobs for low and moderate income people in Seminole County. So, they gave us a grant, the grant built the parking lot, and there was excess money. So, we did some additional things to spend some of the rest of the grant money. Want, want a bigger explanation or stop there?
Nah.
Okay.
One, yeah, one day, uh, not say, but that, I think I kind of remember you talking about something similar to that. I think it's jarred in some of that. How many jobs is this Latham?
Forty-four, sound right, Sharon? Was it, it was forty-four addition, or forty-four jobs that Latham agreed to create to help get us the grant.
Right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Scott Rossman?
Yes.
Jolene DeSet?
Yes.
Jeff Nance?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, item, go ahead.
Go ahead, okay, never mind, we're a go.
Okay, um, item four, consideration and possible action to approve ten thousand dollars to be dedicated to a mural initiative project by the Seminole Arts Council, to be funded from beautification budgeted funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. Jackie, did you have some information you wanted to share with us on this?
Uh, did you catch this up on me?
I did, yes.
Thank you so much. So, uh, every year I try to, I try to spot somewhere that just isn't on board. And this is part one of the two-part plan, and I've got, the reason why this is part one is because this is the part that I have verbal permission from the property owner, so I was just informed that we may need some additional paperwork, it's more than verbal agreement, so I'm gonna get Mr. Carter about that later. But, so, this is phase one of the two-part project, and my hope is to get this approved at some point before we redo the budget in the summer. And then after that, I'm gonna come back to part two. Just so you know that you guys can put that in the budget next year too. So, across the street from this, the alleyway that goes to the Bank First Parking Lot, that actually was way worse than this, but I feel like this is gonna be a good introduction into getting that part done. And I know the, the city obviously is gonna be over there eventually too, and it would be much better for them to have something beautiful to look at. I got permission from the property owners, some of them, still working on some of the others, that one's a little tighter. I know, but all these people over here, so it was a lot easier, so that's why that's phase one. So I'm still working on the other side, but this is what I'm looking at here. We're just gonna paint in the window sections of the property, not actually on the brick. The white brick is, uh, on the east side, and the red brick is on the west side. And with this, um, if we can get it approved, the ten thousand dollars is actually a modest amount, because most muralists work at least fifteen dollars a square foot, mostly around twenty-five to thirty dollars a square foot, really. So, this would really be charitable of the artists as well to come spend their money on paint to slink here for a slightly less rate, so. But yeah, I just wanted to kind of give you guys our little pitch on it, and pitch on where we're at with it, and if you have any questions, I could answer.
Where's this at again?
It's on the alleyway, but on between, uh, Oak Street and Evans. This is an empty building that, with the, on the west side, the Mattingly Jr., it was across from his old office location on Oak Street.
Okay.
The windows are like a plaster with a wood trim at the top. I don't know what he's planning on doing with that property, we don't need to talk about that. I just asked if we could, and he said yes, okay, work comes after. But, the other person on the other side is the same, but we are gonna keep one of those little movies that are built onto the things. I think she said her dad built those in the nineties, and she's a little sentimental, so one of those will remain there. And I also, to save a little money, but get a little more color, I wanted to do a community mural, so one of those spaces will probably be done by people who live here.
Hey Jackie?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I'm all, I'm all for, um, the murals, they're absolutely beautiful. Especially when I go into other towns, I'm like, dad, dude, did ours, you know, like when I see somebody else's, or I see his, um, his work other places. I would, uh, I would prefer to see it on buildings, um, that are in operation down there. Cause my thought is, we're putting ten grand on a building that's coming down, um, and then why aren't these buildings in operation? That, it just makes me think these building.
Is that building coming down?
I don't know, but, but it's not in operation, you know what I mean?
I typically try to steer away from buildings that are gonna come down, because I do think that's, uh, economically irresponsible.
Like, I love the idea that it was on the donut shop, because we, we see all that, and I, and I like the idea that it would be by the new city hall to dress it up. I'm all for dressing up downtown, I just, a lot of those buildings are connected, 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 and they're, the insides are run down, and that building's not gonna be anything useful to the city, therefore it should come down, um, at some point. And I don't want to, one, I don't want to disrespect the artist's work, but the building coming down in six years.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I get that, on the other side, it's a lot more questionable.
Did you have other, were these like, you went through all of your, your buildings, and you're like, these are my solid ones that I think are gonna be the best? Or, were you like, no, I think these will be okay?
Typically, I'm going in a hundred different directions, and this now seems the most feasible to get.
No, you're in one direction, that you made me honest, yeah.
But if you guys have property that you would like to see it on, I know that Dana and I talked about a crosswalk project in the future too. We need to have more conversations about that, I would love to see that happen, and that's, you know, public property, and we could probably maybe that lasts longer.
So, Mr. Mayor, this may actually help us, uh, allocate this money or put this money to, to good use. One of the things that, um, I really stuck my nose into here in the last two weeks, at Steve's request, uh, we've had s- there was, there's been some municipalities that have had some, some potential legal issues, um, with using public monies for, on private properties, okay? So we've got to be really careful about this, this is a good project, it's, you know, we were able to do this in the public park, you know, uh, which wasn't a problem, it was, it was really easy. But, uh, we, we, there's some things that we need to do, uh, just to cover bases, um, before we actually, you know, commit to it. But, uh, in Jackie's defense, you know, the, the agreements that we have, some of the things that were, uh, we discovered is, you know, maybe we can get an easement from the property owner, it's kind of like an art easement that makes it, that makes it city property, so to speak, that art. So that's a way, kind of a workaround, that you can, you know, that's been brought up, I just need to make sure that that is, uh, you know, something that we can rely on. But, I will, I will say this unequivocally, the, the use of this type of money for public property, there's no problem with it. I mean, if it's a park, like we did, uh, was it the dinosaur, or, I can't remember what the, the.
The Chase Park?
The, the Chase Park part, I can't remember the.
Horses.
The horses.
Yes.
I was there, I don't know, it's a great deal.
Chase Park has become a rotating project, so the mural didn't last very long at all.
But we can, that, that wasn't, that wasn't an issue, but I, Jackie certainly wants to get the, uh, the funding issue locked down, and I've asked her, talked to her about maybe if it was okay if we tabled this, I don't think she has a problem with it, but just so we can just, you know, cover our basis on it.
Sounds like you have some other people you need to contact anyway, that you need to get ahold of, did you say you had some other people you needed to contact for this project, or you?
For this, this portion of the project, no. And like I said, I'm, he, he spoke to me, and I completely understand, and, like, I'm just trying to get, get this taken care of before the budget rolls around this summer. So, um, what I'm gonna do is give him our agreement, which does kind of say like, hey, yes, we're putting this on your property, but it belongs to us, and it's under our care. But again, we can do whatever we need to without it to make it work for us. If you guys have any questions about any of the projects, or you have suggestions on how to do it differently, just get with me. You can either email the Arts Council, or just email me directly, we can see what you have, you know? And I also just want to say, while I've got the floor, the, when I pick these properties out, typically, there's more to it than, it's gotta benefit the public more than it benefits the property owner. And I was really thinking about this project as bringing more life to downtown, doing like the lights across the bottom, and just making it somewhere where our walkers, because we have a lot of people who walk, go a little safer walking. So, that's, there's always a little more to it, and I could, I, I love that we're beautifying people's property, but it's more than just a yes or no, I need to know that they're gonna be, you know, responsible for this a lot.
I think, I think it's a good idea, only problem I have with it is this next set of buildings, everybody, well, the city paid for that, they're gonna come do mine too. We're gonna run into a problem, ten thousand here, ten thousand here, ten thousand here, ten thousand there. And some of these people abandon buildings, they wanna get their, you know, the backside done, and they're gonna tear the building down in two years. I just, I mean, that's just my feeling, I like the idea, but people are gonna be wanting, you know, their buildings are gonna be wanting us to pay to get a mural put on, and it's just gonna continue. Then we have to go and explain to the public, this is why we spent ten thousand dollars.
That's absolutely what started the questioning, was Edmund has got into a situation like you're talking about, where somebody claimed favoritism, and then they were like, wait a minute, you're spending public money on a private property, so.
Yeah.
Now all the city managers across Oklahoma are having a big discussion about, well, how are you doing public art? Well, we have to take it through a private foundation, like, or maybe through an urban renewal, uh, and they give competitive grants, so they, each property owner has to submit ideas, and that urban renewal gives a grant based upon a competitive scoring.
So we may need to redo this when we do budgets next year.
That's what we're asking is, let's.
We, we've kind of done this also in the past, whenever we had money allocated for facade, uh, you know, refurbishment. So, maybe it's a public-private partnership type deal, instead of just saying, hey, you know, if you want this done, maybe you can have, add a little money to it, or whatever.
There's a way to do it, we just need to make sure we do it the right way.
I have a question, please. You say you're, uh, plan to fill in the window spaces. Is there a way that that could be done on panels, that if there's an issue, the building being torn down, that we can save them and relocate them somewhere else?
I don't think that's impossible. Attaching it would be the hardest part, but it's on the road.
See, I ran into a similar situation that you're talking about, lost a job over it, because I kissed my wife goodbye in the morning, and then I had to kiss all the wives of the neighborhood, of course, and the place of work. I'm just trying to make a lot of that, because that's always an issue. I mean, people always complain that you did this for so-and-so, that you don't do this for someone over here, but I don't feel like we can allow that to keep us from accomplishing our goals, and beautifying the city. And I think that art is one of the souls of a community. And so I'm in favor of it a hundred percent, if there's a way that we could do it, so that when the building comes down, it's relocated, or whatever, I'd like to, um, for y'all to consider that.
I agree with, I agree with Larry, I, I don't think we, we, or I don't think I want to govern this city in fear of what might happen in the future, and then we just leave everything as it is, because we're afraid of what might happen. I think, um, I was just telling my son this the other day, how do you eat a rhinoceros? One bite at a time. And how we beautify our city, one area at a time, one building at a time, one art project at a time. So, Jackie, I, I want to commend you and the, the Arts Council for just constantly being creative and coming up with, you know, ways to beautify our city, because this area of town, I'm looking at this, and there's, there's weeds that are growing up, there's, you know, how well is, how well as a city are we taking care of this alleyway to begin with? And we, I haven't had that conversation with anyone about how well we're taking care of these alleys, and then you come up to us and say, I want to take care of this alley. We want it, we want to, you know, not only take care of it, we want to beautify this area, and we want to, downtown needs so much help. And if there's just a little bit of art that can get something going, um, I could, I mean, I sent you the, the pictures from, I think it was Tupelo, Mississippi, and I was there. They had, their alleyways were painted, and they had lights going across, and they had tables set out and music playing, and then, you know, when it's all done at the night, that, after the end of the night, they take it all away, and you start over the next day. Why can't we do that? You know, why, you know, and I'm definitely not gonna not do it out of fear. So, I, I think if there's a way that you can find out to, to, to keep it, even if not, it's not meant to be permanent, I don't know of any art that's permanent.
I can also say too, that if for some reason you guys can't fund this, it's not, not gonna happen.
Right, right.
I just gotta find the money somewhere else.
Right. No, and I, I definitely want to support you, I, I, I don't know what the, I don't want to get in the legal part of it, um, leave that up to you all and, and Jackie to work with, but, um, she already has the verbal, okay, I'm, I'm supportive and moving forward with it. I think if we can question things to death, um, again, this is ten thousand dollars, I would just want to keep bringing up, you guys spent sixteen thousand on fireworks that went up within two seconds, and didn't, y'all didn't have half as many questions about it as you are for Jackie right now. So, I just want to, I just want to say I'm supportive of it, anything that's gonna save downtown, I'm, I'm all for it.
I'm not saying I'm against it, okay? I'm not saying I'm afraid, I'm just saying, like Steve was saying, Edmund had the problem. That's what I'm talking about, let's get the, everything straight first before we go, yeah, let's do it. Because I don't want somebody coming back and something happened to us, that's the only reason I said that. I'm not against, I'm not against it at all.
And I agree with both of you.
Not at all.
Like, I think it's important that we at least have this city attorney looking at our.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it happen somehow. There's a way to do it, we'll find it.
As Dana was saying, I, when you were talking about that, I was thinking about Nashville, the whole alleyway is nothing but lights and people walking around, and so, I know we're not Nashville, but, I mean, we can still, uh, do some, do some pretty cool things out there.
So I've got one more thing, maybe it's just a coincidence, but, um, I, I didn't think Jackie was gonna be able to answer this, but you might, because you said something that makes me think that it came back to you. So, on ten thousand dollars, right? So, did you ask us, hey, I'd like ten thousand, or did we, it just seems quite the coincidence that this is exactly what we used on six snowmen, so, um. Did you, yeah, did you happen to ask us for the ten thousand, and now we're going, I.
I'm acutely aware of how much money's in that fund, and how much has been spent, and I asked specifically if what was left.
It's about as long as this.
I love it, I love it. I think sometimes we spend money like we're a double-income family, and to be honest, Seminole is a single-parent family income. We don't have revenue that comes in, so I go back to, I, it was a hard no for me on fireworks, and it was a moderate no on the snowman, because where's that money coming from? And then that was a prime example, you needed it for this, right? And not six snowmen.
I asked her, this is the, the fourth year of asking.
Yeah.
And the initiative.
And it's in our budget.
Well, it's the beautification is, and I'm aware, but.
It is public money, and you can ask anytime you want to, but also, I did warn you guys as well.
Yeah.
When we were looking at Christmas lights as well, I, I approached them and said, hey, if we were to use some of this money, here's what would be what was left, just so they were aware, because I know they were constantly putting projects together.
He was consulting our design, uh, skills. He needed to know what would look best.
I need to know their perspective, but, yeah, so that was part of the, that's another reason probably that.
I appreciate the transparency too.
Yeah, so I, I'll be fully, I'll be fully transparent, I did that, because I didn't want to leave you guys, you guys have used that money in the past few years, so for me just to say.
Too, though, I, and I've been using, I'm aware of the fund, I'm, I'm watching the budget meetings to make sure it gets renewed, I'm advocating to everyone, do please keep it in the budget, keep it in the budget. I'm the one person in town that, and it's like, I'm just there, please.
Yeah, and I didn't want you guys to get hit in the back and think, oh, someone didn't tell us we were taking our money, so that was part of me too.
We want other people to use the money.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jackie.
Make a motion to table.
All in favor?
Aye.
And pose like sign. Alright, moving on to item five, consideration and possible action to approve the annual lease renewal of Magnolia Park to the Seminole Alliance Club, effective November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five through January tenth, twenty-twenty-six, for hosting the Seminole Wonderland Light Display and Activities.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Scott Rossman?
Yes.
Jolene DeSet?
Yes.
Jeff Nance?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, moving on to item six, consideration and possible action to approve one thousand dollars to be dedicated to advertising associated with Snowman Wonderland activities, to be funded for beautification budgeted funds of twenty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. And we have Les and Ernie, both you guys are here, do you guys want to say anything about this, are you good? We kind of caught you off guard, didn't I? I just didn't know if you guys wanted to promote it or what have you.
It is just, particularly for advertising, for putting on the activity nights. In the past, that's been paid through the tourism, of course, now that's not available to us, so now we're asking the, uh, city to beautification account to pay the one thousand dollars, which is a discounted amount, it's something we've been paying fourteen years now, so that's what we're asking.
Is that through the producer?
Can I add something to that, Corey?
Sure, come on. You don't need a mic.
I really don't. Back, uh, as you all know, I mean, we live here in Seminole, and, first, we're outside that old metro loop, okay? We won't get included in that list of deals. When the city had Brianna Wymore here, and the tourism council that year put like ten thousand dollars into promoting, and it was probably the best attending year, had charged buses and everything else. We know the advertising makes a difference. This is just specifically to advertise the activity nights that the local entities are participating in to promote their activity nights to bring folks to the deal. I think it's safe to say that there's over ten thousand people that attend this every year, every year. And, uh, those of us that run the trams, we have, we have some repeat customers, they come every year themselves, and, and then I've talked to people that haven't been out there in five years, you know? So, you have the whole deal, but we feel like the advertising really does help. Gifford, Gifford is a lion, and he has been more than generous with us, as Les said, the thousand dollars is a discounted price based on their, their advertising schedule. And I do think you'll truly get your bang for your buck, they come into town, and now we have more eating places, so they'll eat and spend money and contribute to the sales tax. It's, it's a hundred and sixty displays, they're all, all of them out there now are LEDs. There aren't any incandescent displays that, that are left to be done, uh, you know, it's, of course, my goal is, I'd like to see it be a driving trail someday, and there's no telling how many folks we would run through, because if we stop the trams at eight o'clock, and people come in and walk it, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming, we always appreciate Snowman Wonderland, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Scott Rossman?
Yes.
Jolene DeSet?
Yes.
Jeff Nance?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes.
Alright, moving on to remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members, let's go to Ward one, Mr. Larry Church.
Don't have anything for you this evening. I think everybody's done a wonderful job, like I said earlier, I just, I'm constantly amazed at what, uh, our city staff can come up with, fund-wise and project-wise. amazed at what our city staff can come up with, fund wise and project wise. And I want to reiterate that I think that art is a pillar of any community. I think religion and art are the soul of the community. And what we can do to promote that, I think we should do it. How's that for not having anything? You did pretty good. Thank you.
Dana?
Welcome everyone to Ward one. I don't have any constituent issues to report on. I do want to thank everyone that put together events that highlight the downtown area, the Halloween trunk retreat, the Veterans Day Parade, the Homecoming Parade, all of that, just, and we have upcoming, the, I say, when I say we, I mean the, the folks from downtown and the Arts Council, the Christmas, I just saw the Christmas parade.
Christmasville.
Christmasville, so exciting. So I just want to thank everyone who, who has anything to do with that, because again, it not only brings our community together, that it highlights the downtown area, which just needs so much love and care. So I just want to thank all those folks, Mado, and thanks everyone, all of that.
All right, John Kramer's not here, Jolene Desette.
Okay. Sad, K9 Havoc, the unit, since I've talked about this right now, the unit that we're looking at for Seminole County, I had the absolute honor of working alongside K9 Havoc when I had K9 Raven. He was a phenomenal, phenomenal animal, along with his handler, so sad news for him, he ended up having cancer and aggressive, it was aggressive, he passed away here recently. Second, I inquired with the city about the PD and their calls, what was our, I was just really curious, what is our biggest call problem in, in the city? Because we had, we had said yes to that grant for the DUIs, and I thought, man, I don't even know how many DUIs we actually even have, shame on me for saying yes before I looked at that, but then I got the numbers from Chief, someone has, someone has an interesting, with the nail on the head, saying yes to the grant program, I'll say that. A lot of liquor problems out there. So, good job with the PD for getting those calls, and I appreciate you getting that list together. We lost, I'm going to say this too, it looks like we've lost quite a few from the PD, but we've gained some unbelievable guys from Okuma. I can't wait to see what those young guys do. I'm excited that they thought enough of our town to leave their hometown to come here. And then, I can't tell you how great my doggone neighborhood is. Every now and again, we get a little foot traffic that comes in and it's got sticky fingers or something, but I absolutely cannot say enough about my neighborhood and that, I brought a unit home the other night and I had five phone calls saying, hey, someone's in your driveway. You know, I'm like, yeah, no, it's me, you know, but it's like, I cannot thank my neighborhood enough, that area that we just, I'm trying to get us a little block party. If it can happen, I hope it happens, somewhere around Christmas time, I'd like to have a little block party, just as an appreciation for Ward two and how wonderful they are, anybody else that wants to come up, but I just, I think the community, especially all the ones that wanted to help me get those yards mowed and taken care of and hauling trash off. And then, oh, circle back to the PD again, sorry for the parking and the citations and people that park in intersections, I appreciate y'all taking care of that, just blows my mind where we think that we can park. But, that's it, I just, maybe the fire department will do something, you know, that's what I'm thinking. But anyway, thank y'all, Scott knows, can't say no wrong about fire, so, anyway, thank y'all, okay, PD and fire, that's it.
Scott Rosman?
Baker ain't here, I was gonna, about a week ago, it was past Sunday, we had a wreck right by the house, in that crazy corner on Van Drive in Coolidge. That crazy one, somebody done been that backyard again, four times now. So I walked down there and I, there was a young kid, said he wasn't from the neighborhood. Talked to the homeowner, called Baker the next day, they're going to set up some deals there, they ordered them, they're going to set them up, so people can see. It's not going to stop it, I guess ODOT said you can't put steel poles there, fill concrete. That was my idea. So, but Baker and Robert, I had a meeting with them on Monday, and they said they will definitely get it ordered, and it should be here in a week, and they'll have it put up. Homeowners are real, real friendly, they thanked me for doing it, and I was like, that's just my job, taking care of you, because two times, once went in the house, another time went through the garage. And I was working for the city at the time, there was a storage building back there, went through that building, this time they just hit the fence and a tree. But, I mean, I appreciate what they did, that quick, they came out, we talked, they said we'll definitely take care of it. Homeowners are happy, so. And PD, keep doing what you're doing, please do. Keep it up. We got some crazy people out there. I feel bad for you guys, but that's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Jeff Nance?
Oh, Jeff Nance. I just want to say, I absolutely love where I live. I love, this is my home, and I've lived here all my life. Absolutely, I have no, I have no complaints. I thank God for where I live and the people that I, that I went to school with, and that we're still here, and I just appreciate the opportunity to sit on this council. Like I say every time, it's my privilege, I get to sit here, and it's not, I don't say that with hollow words, it's my privilege to get to sit here and try to make decisions to make this place better before I leave it. And, I don't know, I'm not a lifer for this council, that's, I'm not, but I just, I don't know how long I'll be here, what I'll do, but, you know, who knows? But I just want to tell everybody how thankful and how grateful I am for, for the place that I live, the guys that keep me safe, even though someone went through my car, the car the other day, it's all right. You know, it's kind of, kind of how it goes, I live on Ideal Street, so it's got an easy access. And so, but I appreciate, you know, the guys that are, keep us safe, keep us protected, I never feel like I'm in harm's way. Been walking the neighborhood around my church on Highland and University, I've been walking there because I'm fat, and so I'm trying to lose weight, and so, been walking that neighborhood, man, and just remembering where I came from, you know, that's where I came from, that's where I grew up. And so I just want to tell you guys, all you guys sitting in the back, I appreciate you guys, appreciate these guys sitting up here at this desk, and all the hard work they do, and even Sharon over there, all the hard work. And I just want to say, you guys, how much I appreciate you guys letting me sit here and do this, I appreciate you guys, and thank God for where I live, got a great church and a great town, I can't, I can't complain, I'm a very, very blessed young man, I appreciate it. All right.
And we appreciate you asking questions like you do, being a new council member. You not only refresh our memories, but you also give us new perspective, so we appreciate that. What do you think you do or not? Chris Hansen's not here, Trace Connor?
For the hunters out there, you know right now the bucks are chasing those, so anytime y'all are driving out there morning and night, be aware, because right now, I have seen more deer on the side of the road, and it's, you hit one, it's probably going to tow to your car. Be careful driving. Got great reports on the new restaurants, Hison's, or Hinson's? Hinson's, the burger deal, we got Easy Street Barbecue, and soon to be JJ Smokehouse. So I mean, three new restaurants, great deal. Hopefully someday the colder temperatures will be here, but try to stay weather aware anyway. I want to thank all the veterans for all their service, thank the schools for hosting the programs, the veteran programs, that's really important. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and always remember to take that package inside the turkey out before you cook it, so, that's all I got.
Full of information tonight. I'll go ahead, veterans, thank you, those serving past and present, we truly appreciate that, we don't have what we have without that, so we appreciate that. Dana, thank you for reading the proclamation, I appreciate that. I asked her to do that in honor of Native American Heritage Month, and she was more than happy to do that, so we appreciate that. And no, I did not wear my shirt, I wore my red, white, and blue, I know.
Thanks.
Chief Withers must have a direct line of communication with all of us, because I guess we all talk to him occasionally, but he's answered a few calls for me that, you know, I don't, I'm one of those that you'll see on Facebook, on the community pages, and someone speaks ill of our city, it lights my fire. So I'm always, I'm like, I'll call Chief and say, hey, is this even true? Do we even have somebody at this gas station, where they said that there was someone there that, I don't know, whatever they did, they checked their license and tried to arrest them or whatever, but you get some pretty ridiculous stuff online, so, but I will fight to the bitter end, so don't challenge me, I'm just saying. The Halloween this year downtown was spectacular, we've all had a part in that, there were so many people downtown. I don't know if any of you were there, but the weather was beautiful, there was a lot of businesses, but there were a lot of kids, so it was really, really a good time. Also a reminder to start preparing for Chocolate Festival, I'm surprised you didn't kick that in there, but the holiday, holiday parade and the Chocolate Festival on the first week in December, because we won't have council meeting again before then, so you guys get your chocolate ready, and get ready for Christmas break, because it'll be here before you know it. I was also going to mention something about the cold weather, I had an individual, which hurts me, but he came in the office today and his significant other had passed away. Well, he was left in a travel trailer that has holes in it with no heat, his heating blanket had died on him, he didn't have any heat, and then he was sleeping on a pad this thick, like one of those you would find in the travel trailer. And I thought, that just may be sick. And so, I made arrangements to get him a heater, and also I had another bed I pulled out of my travel trailer that I wasn't going to use, so we're going to make arrangements to get that to him, just to get him some heat, but watch for your neighbors and watch for people that are around you, because a lot of times, they may not even say anything, but if you hear of it, make it a point this year just to help them, that's what we're here for. So, but anyway, that just kind of hurt my heart to know that people were having to be in situations like that. He was burning two burners in the travel trailer all the time to keep warm. Not only is it dangerous, but you're also wasting a lot of fuel doing that, so, but anyway. And then also, one of the things, thanks for, we've had a lot of community members, as well as churches and businesses, that have stepped up to provide some food for people that have not had due to the SNAP benefits. So it's been really encouraging to see the city step up and do that, there was quite a few people that did, so we, I had a couple in my apartment complex that we just bought food for a couple of nights, because that was an easy thing for me to do, but yet it still meant a lot for them to take care of that for, so, that's all I have, so.
I had something to that, Mr. Ladies? I was talking about your distressed individual, I met someone yesterday that at night was to walk around and sleep during the day because they have no place to stay. I invited them to my spare bedroom, which they declined, because they don't know me that well, but I don't know how many other people might be in that circumstance, but I appreciate that you encourage folks to help other people out. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah. So, Jolene, if you could give me a date for your neighborhood party?
20th.
20th, okay.
December 20th.
I'd like to have some security there in case Larry shows up and kisses the neighborhood wives.
That's it, thank God, no wife.
Only married. Just need a little security, never know. You know, first thing, thank you veterans for the freedom that you've provided me and my family, it's a big deal. Congratulate all of you all for keeping our city government open. Apparently that's a, that's a thing, that you can close government, so thank you for staying hooked up with us, it's also a big deal. Family Entertainment Center is going well.
Looks great.
We've got a quick video that Sharon has put together, as Sean as well, if you care to see the screen real quick, it's not very long. This was done by our architect. Yeah, it's coming, it's coming up quick, if you've driven by there, you've seen the red iron, the sewer plant is equally as impressive, maybe not quite the same atmosphere, but it is going super well, and we're proud of that as well. December the 11th, you'll see that again, if you care to be at the forum, the city will be the presentation, and it's going to be a trivia, there'll be prizes. If you know your city, you need to be there on December the 11th, because we're going to find out who knows about the city of Seminole, so, yeah, Trace has already mentioned the, the new restaurants, I'll stay away from that. Sharon and Sean, this takes work, I mean, being able to, to give you the things on the screen, the production that Sharon and Sean do, it's, and broadcasting, just want to give them a, a thank you. Our housing boom continues, if you're driving around town, it's remarkable to see how we were so starved for housing for so long, and now we're seeing those sticks go in the air, it's fantastic to see. And we continue our efforts on trying to get a community markets food bank in Seminole, and so far, everybody's nodding their head yes, so hopefully, eventually, we'll see what will equate to a market inside of the old Allen James Building, so that is the plan, and people will be able to shop for their food bank needs there with dignity, and we're looking forward to seeing movement on that. Just let you know that your city crews are ready for winter, we've got, all the trucks are in shape, the snow plows, if, if we should need them, we're, I think we're in great shape, and that's all I have tonight there.
Brad?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I probably just want to add, I would like to see this, I know you say that's not exciting to see the sewer plant, but I think it would be nice if we would do a drone, some type of flyover and get a video of that, because I haven't been out there since we started, shame on me, but I still think we would like to get a view of kind of what we're paying for.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
If you guys could do that before December, that would be really great, just a flyover and get us a good, oh, aerial view of what's going on, maybe you can compare what was there versus the new, or kind of give a, let Brian kind of speak to how that's unfolding out there, okay?
Yeah, you can't hear him, but Sean's back there saying, yeah! He loves doing the drone stuff, so.
I know it, I know it, so. All right, we have a couple executive sessions, do these at all relate, do we need to do one before the other? Just asking.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so if that's the case, let's go ahead and do a, I need a motion to head into executive session, let me read it first, so I can do that. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to enter into executive session under Oklahoma Statute 25, OS subsection 307B, for confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning pending investigation, claim, or action.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I'm not sure how to say that. Call in favor?
Aye.